All right, Commissioner May is now in office. It's actually been a terrific.
Thank you.
Mayor Richard Wilson presiding.
Thank you, Steve. I hope so my good friend, Commissioner Cross, to deliver our dedication.
That's valid prayer. Holy God, it is with grateful hearts that we come before you again to thank you for the many blessings of life that you've bestowed upon us. God, may we never take for granted the abundance of your gifts toward mankind. Because we do know that every good and perfect gift does come down from above. We thank you for your mercy, your kindness, most of all, for the good health you've given us. Watch over us as we conduct this meeting, may all that we do and say be for the betterment of our community and for all of our citizens that live here, do business here, and just recreate as well. We thank you and we love you, in your son's name I pray, amen. Steve, would you leave some for that?
I pledge allegiance to the liberty of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now that I've returned, I'll ask Theresa to take our roll please, and when the board opens, please record your attendance. Has everyone checked in? Go ahead and take the attendance, Mr. Wood.
Seventeen present, seven absent.
Thank you. Next up, guest speakers, we probably don't have any guest speakers now, but I do want to welcome our guests from Westbridge, and we'll be seeing a lot of them, and if you'd like to introduce your folks to us, that'd be great. Angie, would you like to introduce them, or?
Oh, he can.
He can, okay.
Yeah, he can go through my.
All right, put me on the spot, it's all right. So, we're with Westbridge, we're the Audio Video Production Class Club. We've got Jameson, Bryson, and Abraham, they're going to be covering the streaming and uploading of all these sessions, and hopefully make sure the public can see it. We cover sports and other meetings in the county, so I'm confident they'll do a good job.
Very good. Thank you, good to have you with us, and we look forward to a productive relationship and a good learning experience for your students. Next up is public comment, Mr. Wood. Commissioner Cross is absent tonight, I understand all those. Thank you, thank you, Doug. Okay, we will recess briefly for our public comment section, we allow, we load here for our citizens, and we allow normally three minutes for you to share your thoughts with us, and if you need a little more than that, we'll try to accommodate you on that. So, the person we have up is Donnie Tollman. Donnie? Is it, okay, I'm sorry.
That don't matter.
I butcher names all the time.
Ronnie Tollman.
Ray Tollman, if you'll give us your address, Ron.
374 Ely Road, and I just wanted to find out about, I'm on the South Fork Utility District, and I know all the crap that's been going on and stuff, and I was wanting to, I haven't heard nothing about what you've got going on with it, and we definitely don't need Bristol Bluff taking this thing over. I know, as you know, Mr. Hamm, we had that meeting over tonight, and I know he wasn't here, and he lied about everything, wouldn't answer questions and stuff like that, and it's bugged me, and Bluff City's paying him a lot of money, now he's on the contract, I guess he sees what's going on, don't know, but you know, if happens that we get to stay in contact like we should, or you know, together as a utility, then they're going to have to, Bristol Bluff wanted to buy him out of that contract that he's trying to get him to sign now, which don't need to happen, and it's, don't care who runs it or nothing, but as a community, there, you know, non-financial problems or nothing, as far as money, I know there's been some things in the past, but I've been checking on it, and some of the other people's been checking, you know, we just got out of the meeting up there where we left the meeting, and you know, things since we went, probably a year and a half ago, fifteen or twenty of us, and things have really changed since then, things, and Tim Hamm was supposed to be up there helping them, and they never got any help. I mean, it was just, you know, it was really bad, I just, I mean, a man sat there for two years, and then it's like he's watching him fail, and apparently now, you know, it's got them, you know, to Nashville and all that, and seeing all these people up here, we don't need people from Nashville running this thing in the county, you know, especially in our county, and we, we need to put some more commissioners in, I realize that, there's a couple of them that shouldn't be, like, boy, it's Tim and Jason Webb, and Jason's done a good job, he's only been there maybe a year, you know, he wasn't there, oh, what's going on, but I know you might not connect her tonight, or whatever, but I want to find out, you know, you have a lot of slaves, yes, what's going on, and I'd like to find out what you think about it.
I appreciate it. I'm sorry, I appreciate you being here, and that is an unfortunate situation there for the people that are served by South Fork. I have been in contact with the Controller's Office right often, and I know they met May the 28th, to set a date of July 14th, that the current board would have an opportunity to make its case for why they shouldn't be removed. And so, we'll have to get to July 14th. If the board is removed, it will be up to me to appoint an interim board, and we'll certainly have a community meeting, and I've talked to the commissioners who represent that area, and we think the transition may be as good if we have commissioners representing the people do that board until we can find community nominees. And that would be important, is community meet, nominate people for the board, for the permanent board. These commissioners are willing to serve on temporary basis, make sure y'all got water, and make sure, so we're preparing for July 14th, and waiting on that date, and I talked to a controller, Mont Power, last Friday, as a matter of fact, and just to confirm that.
Yeah, okay, well, and I don't understand even why he has to miss that, I mean, I know that is way above my head, but I still know as a community what needs to be done, and I hope you can see that, and maybe, you know, help out on that, because I know some of those guys up there, I once asked one of them tonight, he needed to resign, because he's been there so long, it was our one commissioner, he needs to go ahead and step down too, like the other two did, but Tim Hamm needs to be liable for some of this, because he was there watching him do this, and just like this, watching him fail, and that's what the control needs to hear.
Right, I checked on that status myself, I know the board had acted before they, before this investigation to look at a merger with Bristol Bluff City. They, I never got a request for that, so therefore have not acted on it. We would not merge that district with anybody until the community met and were aware of that and considered possibilities.
Bristol we might consider, but not Bristol Bluff.
I'm saying. Well, you know, South Fork is a result of merging two districts, that neither one of them are in good shape, and we expect it to be better.
Tipton was horrible, I lived on the place, I lived at different places at that time, and we had, it was horrible, I mean, like, every week, water was out, and in the last year and so, we've had really good response time, I mean, everybody's up there in an hour or two, maybe, you know, and that don't happen on most of them, you just call them, they come, and it's been taken care of, and they're trying to upgrade and stuff, so.
Well, I want to say publicly, there's been an investigation, but there's some really good people on that board right now, and we've talked with the, I guess the Utility Control Board about that, and some of the investigators, so hopefully we come out to a good conclusion, we've pointed two peoples in the last year, and we found those to be, and your chairman was an outstanding member of our community, so we'll involve you all in any decision, or I'll involve you all in any decision, and these commissioners that have volunteered, they've worked with.
Yes, and I'll thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you. That completes our list, is there anybody else in the audience that might want to address the commission on any reason tonight? If none, we'll go back to session. Up on our list is resolution, review of resolutions, and that, you may, as a sponsor of, say what you like about a resolution, and answer any question that you'd like to, so first up is item number two. Commissioner Glover, you're recognized on item number two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This resolution is to request officials of the Southern County Judicial System, representing Southern County Courts, to review provisions of a Southern County Pay-to-Stay program, and discuss ideals designated to require an inmate to repay them costs of $35 and/or other costs for their stay when committed to the Southern County Jail for any length of time of 24 hours or more. The weekly cost of imprisonment is tough, and their commitment to Southern County taxpayers of taxes to house inmates separate and apart from society, and the Southern County Board of Commissioners has determined that it is in the best interest of Southern County to establish a plan to charge inmates for their stay at a rate of $35 per day, and pay charges with appropriate medical costs, dental procedures, eyeglasses, laboratory tests, elective education programs, vocational education programs, and meals while incarcerated in Southern County Jail. And inmates paying for costs of their incarceration reduces capability due to inmates seeking incarceration as an alternative to have payers of taxes pay these costs on their behalf, and while Southern County is the beneficiary of solid sales tax proceeds, there remains a desire to institute a practice that ensures that proceeds promote a robust process for expanding these proceeds on behalf of the payers of taxes of Southern County. And inmates can provide appropriate community service, a time of rate of minimum wage to expend responsibilities under pay-to-stay obligations. What I'd like to add to that, if these inmates are not eligible or available to pay, they can do community service at minimum wage per hour to pay off their responsibilities. Pursuant to provisions of Tennessee Code, Southern County Jail Administrator is authorized to access the amount of office pursuant to these charges associated with an inmate's incarceration. The two-thirds vote of the legislative body affirms this request to adopt provisions of Southern County Pay-to-Stay program. May be resolved at the Board of County Commissioners of Southern County, Tennessee, assembled in recognition of 21st day of April 2022, hereby fully supports requesting officials in the judiciary system representing Southern County Courts review a pay-to-stay program. And I'd like to explain what this pay-to-stay program would provide for Southern County. All the money collected from the pay-to-stay program is deposited in the Southern County General Fund the year, with 90% of that amount at the end of the year, when we do the budget, just like we're doing now, with 90% of that fund going to the jail obligation bond, which the bond is about $4 million a year. 6%, they left out this part in here, we're going to take 90% of the bond, of the fund, and put it to the jail bond, with 10% left out, 6% of that 10% will be appropriated for pay raises for jail employees, and 4% appropriated to maintenance of the new jail and the old jail. The further resolved that the reassessment of appropriations in Southern County Pay-to-Stay program relative to $35 per day, reviewed by annually, if costs go up, that could be adjusted, but would need to come back through the county commission for approval. Now, the copy of this resolution shall be sent by Southern County Clerk to all Tennessee members currently serving in the Tennessee General Assembly and Tennessee Director of Department of Corrections. And what I'd like to add to that, if we done the $35 per inmate, and we based that on 900 inmates in the jail, I think since we've been here, I don't recall a time that we've been below 600. So, if we based that at $35 per inmate on 900 inmates, it's costing the county taxpayers right now $31,500 a day. When you base that on a month, that comes to $945,000 a month, and you times that by 12, it gives us $11,340,000 a year for 900 inmates, and that's what we're basically asking for. With the price of food, electricity, water, and so forth going up, I would say right now, I don't have any numbers from the sheriff on this, but I would say we're probably paying $50 a day, or maybe a little bit more, if you remember last month, he came in and we had to do 72, so that's kind of what we're looking at, and if it's $50, based on 900 inmates would be $45,000 per day, based on a monthly annual cost of $1,350,000 a month, and annually the year of $16,200,000. And I think we all got to remember what's coming down the road, in about a year, a year and a half, we'll have a new jail open, when that new jail opens, if I'm not mistaken, I think it's 400 beds, am I correct?
560.
560, well, I based this on 500, on 400 beds, at $50 a day, or $50 a inmate, that's $20,000 a day, and then that would be right at $600,000 a month, so we would be adding $7,200,000 on to the $11,340,000 that we're doing now. And guys, when we sit here and look at this, what we've been doing has not been working. Back years ago, when you had 200 or 250 inmates in the jail, the taxpayers in this county could probably afford that, now, this day and time, it's just, it's just not being feasible to do. The sheriff was in here just a few days ago, talking about adding on, I think he said he was short about, I think, $29,000 a month for food, again, cost and so forth, but out of the 11 million, if we were to collect all of it, which I know that's going to be impossible, but if we were to collect $11,340,000, and we deducted the 10% from that and gave it back to the sheriff, he would receive $1,134,000. And 6% of that would go for employee raises, and the other would go for the upkeep of the jail. If we were to collect 50% of that cost, it would be $5,670,000, with the sheriff's office getting $567,000 back in money. We're going to have to do some steps in this direction to take care of the taxpayers of this county, I mean, we've got, we've got folks that's trying to put their kids through college, we've got folks that's trying to pay their bills, and we just need to do something to keep the burden off of the taxpayers, and I think this is a step in the right direction. And I know one of the questions tonight is, how are these inmates going to pay for this? Well, they're already paying their fines and fees, the ones that's pinned through the court system. And this could be added on to, to those fines and fees when they go in. If they're sentenced to forty-five days by the judge, then that number will be totaled up and that's what we'll be expected to pay. If they can't, or they don't have a job, we've got companies in this area that are willing to work these inmates. One company right now we've already got doing it is, is, is in Bristol, Robinette. I think they're working four or five inmates a day now and paying them so much an hour. So if we can do four or five inmates a day, and we can pay a deputy to be on site with these folks at that company, then we can work more. And I want you to think about something. You've got fathers right now that's not paying child support, and they're probably in jail for not paying child support. That is another thing we can do. We can find them a job, and they can work, and that money would go to their child. And it would be a, a nice little nest egg built up for them when they do get out, that they don't have to go back in to drugs or, or thieving or, it, it could change their life. But it's something we're going to have to try. It's something that we're going to have to do. I feel like that our taxpayers expect us to look at something like this to see if it's going to work. I know the sheriff has made some comments that he felt like that it was going to be hard to collect this money. We don't know that yet. I think it's worth a try. But we've got, we've got to think about our families and we've got to think about our children and grandchildren to move forward. So that's, that's where I'm at with this. I think it would be a win situation. You're going to put people in a, we've always, since I've been here, tried to figure out ways to keep these folks from coming back to jail. If we can put them in the workforce while they're in jail and take them back and forth to work and just like we're doing with the, with the Robinette in Bristol. I think the Robinette company approached you, was it a year or two ago, about working these inmates and either making the check to the county or to the jail or to the inmate?
We've had companies that have approached the judges and the DA and the sheriff.
But i- if we, if we collected something, it's better than nothing. So I'm open for questions. I'm open for suggestions. I'm open for anything that we can put with this resolution to make it work for the taxpayers of the county.
We've got a little list, so first up is Commissioner Gardner. You recognize him.
Thanks, Mayor. Question for the sponsor. Could you tell, tell the commission some other Tennessee counties that have operated this, this type of program successfully?
I think the closest county to us is Anderson County down around Knoxville. I think they've been, some of these counties are charging fifty and sixty and sixty-five dollars a day. And they're even charging for, for other items too. But just like the research that we've done, one county's collecting about thirty percent. That's better than what we're, what we're getting right there. So if we can get fifteen percent, twenty percent, thirty percent, and plus, the way this is set up, I think it's going to be a plus for the employees at the sheriff's department to help make this a success. So that's, that's kind of what we're at.
Mr. Bass.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me. You read an amendment that you're applying to resolution, something regarding to minimum wage jobs. So what you're seeing, that if an inmate was there and they went out on work release and they worked on a job, minimum wage job, they would have to come back and pay the county the thirty-five dollars per day for, for their boardroom, I guess you'd say?
Mm-hmm. That could be deducted out of their pay. It could be done weekly. It could be done monthly, as long as they're in jail. And then that amount could be put in, like I said, the companies can make that money out to the jail. They can make it out to the county or they can make it out to the individual. In my opinion, the individual would probably be the one to be the best to receive it and have their own account. So like I said, if they owe child support, that could be deducted, deducted out of it to pay their child support.
Let, let me ask you this question. How many people you think out of the nine hundred inmates is going to actually fall into that category that's going to go out on work release to, to pay?
I talked to three people in the last week that has been in jail and has been in the county jail. And some of them, one of them in particular was in there for driving on revoked license. And he told me if they'd have been a program like that when I was in there, he said I would have took advantage of it greatly. So we don't really know until we get a chance to make it in the right direction for them, to take advantage of it. And the other fellow that I talked to, he said that he would be willing to work second shift. He said, "If I'm sentenced to forty-five days and I can get out there and work eight hours a day and get something for it, I would do it." So out of the nine hundred mark, I would say they might be maybe two hundred or two hundred and fifty starting off, that anybody would have to, to, and it would probably have to be done the same way we done the ankle monitor program. It would have to be approved by, you know, by the judge and by the, the district attorney.
Which I think we've got about thirty-five or forty that actually down on ankle monitors, so.
And see, that's something that we've done about two months or three months ago. Commissioner Locke and I think Commissioner Gardner were sponsors of that particular resolution. And we, we spent eight hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars for two hundred and forty monitors. And we've got thirty-eight people out on them.
Let me ask you another question. Who is going to actually bill these inmates? And who's going to be responsible for collecting this from the inmates? And if an inmate is in there and they don't go out to work and they accumulate a lot of, of money owed to the county, how far is the process you're going to go to collect that fee after leaving when they're gone?
I think when they're sentenced to be incarcerated, that I think their release is, would, would should be on the grounds that they paid this money before they're released. They can put it on a credit card. They can put it on a check or, or anything.
Well, I mean, I don't want to be, I don't want to be negative towards your resolution. I think it has some merit. But I just, I think it's going to be very hard to enforce.
As far as collecting the money, that would be done through the, the court system, just like the money's collected for the fines and fees that are in there.
You know, the commissary, I was here, we put the commissary at the jail to where people that use phones have to pay for the phone usage, and the families are having to pay for that. And then they've got vending machines, which is called the commissary, to where if an inmate wants and needs a, a toothbrush or, or something like that, hygiene stuff, or they wanted to go get a snack. Families are having to actually put money into those accounts just for those inmates have money to buy the stuff that they need that's above and beyond what's required of, of the sheriff's department to provide for them. I've heard from several parents and family members that's had inmates over there that that's really, it straps them a lot just to be able to fund the commissaries for those inmates. And one of the judges, when I talked to him about this, he said, "Mark," he said, "I have criminal court and I tell that individual inmate, or the one being convicted, they're on probation. I'm having a hard time getting them to walk across the street to even sign up for probation office, which is like, I think, like thirty dollars a month that they have to pay the probation officer to, to go see them and all that. It's like thirty or forty dollars a month." Having a hard time getting inmates to walk across the street, even sign up for probation, and next thing you know, they're having to go out and file arrest warrants on them to bring them back in because they violated probation. So if an inmate that's willing to be in jail and not willing even to go across the street to pay their monthly fee for probation, I just don't know how you're going to collect thirty-five dollars a day out of these people. And I, that, that's my only point. And, and I just, you know, it's kind of like they're accumulating a bill with no way to pay that bill. Um, I, I mean, I, I just don't know how that would ever be enforced.
There, there is a way for them to pay the bill. They can do community service while they're in there. Worcester County takes seven busloads of inmates out a day, and they work in the community. They weed eat. They trim trees. They work along the road. They work at all over the county, Worcester County. That's what needs to happen here.
Well, and I, I think that, I agree with that, and I see that a lot out here. And we used to have worker these programs to where Fred Cox back there is the guy's name. He took buses loads out and they mowed and they painted and they done all kinds of stuff. They had carpenters, they had concrete people. They did have it. I, I haven't seen that actually go on to Southern County for many, many years. They used to have a garden up there. They got out, produced a garden. Actually Buddy King used to be the one over the garden and done the tractor and, and, and raised their own produce up there. And they've not done that for many years, twenty over twenty years. So I, I just, I, it sounds good. When you talk about the numbers of money that it could collect, it sounds really good. I mean, that would work. That would be fantastic, to be able to, to recoup these high costs of, of housing inmates. But I just, I'm really learning if we'd ever collect that kind of money. I just don't, I just don't see.
What are we getting now?
We're getting nothing.
Okay.
Something's better than nothing, right?
Something's better than nothing.
Do that still.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you, Eric.
I'll probably, thank you, Mark. Okay, Commissioner Calston, you're up next. You recognize him.
Thank you, Mayor.
Did you cut? Hang on, no. Okay, you're right.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my first question is, have you spoke with the judicial system about this or the sheriff's?
I sent an email to Mr. Stoffman's office and I had no reply. I talked to the sheriff about it and his reply to me was, "There's no way it will work." That's what he told me.
Well, our jails, it has been overloaded. I mean, extreme, what is it, a thousand eleven hundred right now? And the ones that are in there, a lot of them are returning. Even when they get out, they don't hardly have a place to go stay. They don't even have transportation to go to work if they wanted to work. I mean, there's a lot involved in rehabbing a person that has been in jail. And maybe he's put ten thousand dollars on his child support, or he's, they put them back in there because they don't pay their probation. Well, a lot of them don't even have transportation to go to probation, much less money unless their family gives it to them. And I just don't see where that they're going to get thirty-five dollars a day to pay this. They would be in debt for a long time to get ahead and to get back on their feet.
The ones that want to work as many jobs as we've got available in Southern County right now, I think they should work.
Well, I think they should.
The ones that don't want to work and they, this is going to deter crime in the county too. Because if, if you know that you get incarcerated for forty-five days, that you're going to owe the taxpayers of Southern County thirty-five dollars a day for being in there. And I feel like this is going to be another tool that we would have to keep this from happening. And I want everybody to, to, to think about something. You've got a casino that's coming to town in just a month or two. And Bristol, Virginia does not have a jail. They take all those prisoners to Abidah. And I won't tell you what's going to happen in downtown Bristol, in the Bristol area. They're going to escort those folks right across the Double Y Line into Tennessee, which is Bristol, Tennessee. And then we're going to have to pick them up and take care of them. That's going to add more cost on them. If we, if we really work on this, I think we can make it work. But it's going to take a team effort. It's going to take the commission, the sheriff, and the judges to make this work. I, I feel like that we owe it to the taxpayers to give it a chance to work, to see what we can do. Let's try it for a year or a year and a half, see what we collect, see how we can put it back in to the taxpayer role and see where we're at and adjust it from there.
Well, if it doesn't work, are we going to forgive the debt? Because I was figuring here on forty-five days, if they paid thirty-five dollars a day, that it was going to be fifteen hundred and seventy-five dollars. And a lot of those people in there, they're just there to have a bed or floor to lay on or whatever they sleep on. And they get, what, two or three meals a day? I mean, that's all they have. And a lot of them, I mean, it's just going to be so hard. It's hard for them to get back on their feet. And I think we could save money if we used them for labor and not pay other labor as to try and get blood out of the turnip.
If we can get them out there to do community service, that would be based on minimum wage per hour, and that's the way they can pay that thirty-five dollars a day.
That we'd have to put them out to work.
There's a lot of stuff in this county that we can get them to do. Like you said, bring them out and, and let's put them to work. Let's show the taxpayers that we're willing to go the extra step to try to get some of their money back. And, and you know, I, I've heard this word so many times, "Oh, he stole because he's poor." Ain't nobody in this room grew up any poorer than I was. I didn't steal. And, and that's just an excuse. I mean, that's just an excuse to say, "Hey, I'm in trouble." Well, take your medicine. You stole. You walked through my yard and got in my truck and drove off in it. It's not my fault that you, you know, I left the keys in it, but you're the one stole it. I'm tired of hearing that. You, you, you chose to steal because that was your choice, and that's what we need to, we need to make an example of. Southern County's not going to do it anymore.
We've got a pretty long list.
Well, you can take a horse to the creek, but you can't make it drink. I mean, it's hard to get those inmates to understand and do they need to be rehabbed. For they won't be going back. It is so important for us to rehab them and to get them back on the right track and help them. And it's even taking them to work. They have no transportation. They really don't have any transportation.
Well, we're evidently, we're using a van or some type of, of, of vehicle to transport them to Bristol now to work. So if we're transporting four of them up there, I don't see why we can't transport fifteen of them.
We need to transport about a thousand.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stanley, we do have a list of folks who want to speak. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. My question is, I know you answered it in a roundabout way, but what happens if they don't pay and they're not eligible for work release? Do they stay in jail? Do they pay that fine?
I think if you've been in there for forty-five days and you owe that amount of money and that's the only thing that's keeping you in there, you'll put it on a credit card. You'll put it on a check. You'll get it any way that you can, if you're going to get out. Is that correct?
I don't see many people that, I don't see many people that are incarcerated that has a credit card.
Maybe a family member does. We have folks that have their credit card.
But is it going, I mean, do they, would that expand their time? Would it extend it if they didn't pay? And I'm not talking about like people forty-five days. What if somebody is in there for almost a year before their trial? Does it go, I mean, you've got judges and you've got lawyers that postpone their court dates.
That's where these ankle monitors were supposed to come in, but that didn't work. So we've got thirty-eight of them out right now. So we're going to have to, like I said, we're going to have to work together to make this happen. Michael's in touch with people to state every day, trying to get people out of that place over there. We can, we can also be in touch with the judges and so forth to help get these people out to work or volunteer or do something to pay their, sure.
I agree with the work release program. I think that we should be doing that whether they're fined thirty-five dollars a day or not. People come to me all the time letting me know why people ain't out here picking up trash and all that. Um, I think they do need to be out there working. And, but my concern is, one, it being a burden on the family members, because I know that, like Mark said, that they're sitting here putting money in there for the commissaries and stuff anyway. People that are in jail that can't even post bail, I don't see how they're going to pay thirty-five dollars a day.
And you said a burden on their family. What do you think about the families that's out here right now?
I know it's a burden on the families.
And I'm going to give you an example. Some of them right now are barely getting enough money to put the gas in their vehicle to get back. At every time. enough money to put the gas in their vehicle to get that far to work. At every time, like I said, for the last three years, we've thrown every single dollar we could throw at that place up there. And it's not gotten any better. We're going to have to try something different to make a difference. If we sit here and do nothing, then nothing's going to be done. So, we're, we're going to have to try. But the ones that you're saying that's, that's in there for a year, a year and a half, or maybe two years, if they're that bad a person, they don't, probably don't need to be in the county jail anyway. They might need to be at the state penitentiary, and that's what.
Well, I mean, we've got one that killed her child that's been over there for over a year.
That's exactly right.
And, you know, is she going to be paying thirty-five dollars a day?
She shouldn't be, I, I think, I think.
I mean, that's a felony she's having.
I think she should. She's, she's, she's young, she's able to work. She should be doing something either in community service to pay back the, the community for what she, what she's done.
But people like that is not eligible for community service. I mean, that's what I'm saying. What happens to the ones?
She could, she could, she could work inside the jail. She could work doing things for people inside the jail. We need to get some of this reimbursed back to the taxpayers one way or the other. We can't keep sitting here raising taxes ten, twelve, fifteen cents every year to take care of people that don't care if they steal your truck or your car or anything else or climb through your window. We're going to have to, like I said, if we sit here and do nothing, nothing's going to be done. And it's going to get to the point to where it's going to eat up. You're going to be sitting here raising taxes every single year to pay for this, for, for the jail. I mean.
You've got a long list. You have a lot of tough questions.
I just don't want to keep people in there because they haven't paid their thirty-five dollars a day and they're not eligible for work relief. That's what I'm saying. What's the repercussions if they don't pay it?
Just like I said, if they are going to be in there that long, then maybe they need to be at a state facility. Maybe they need to be at another place. I know the state is full. Ain't nowhere to put them. But we're going to have to get reimbursed some way or another for some of this cost that we are expending. We came forward to keep raising taxes on people to pay sixty-nine, seventy thousand dollars a month for food and twenty-one thousand dollars a month for water, sixteen thousand dollars a month for gas for the jail, not counting all the other expenditures that we've got. And like I said, we're going to have to try something different. This, this is just not work. This is a, this is a work session. If somebody has got an ideal to add to it that will make it better, I am one hundred percent open. That's what a work session is. This is exactly what we're doing.
We've got a whole lot of folks that have questions.
You might have to give me a break. I might have to.
No, you can get no break.
I might have to go smoke.
At eight o'clock when I need to smoke, you'll get a break.
I'm ready. Let's do it.
Commissioner Blaylock.
I'm especially ready for this one.
I know it is.
Judy, it's good to see you here. I'm glad that you're better and.
And your idea sounds great. But we had a robbery. And we went to the judge and told him, and he said, "Well, we'll get you nothing." And we won, and we won from criminal. And we had his picture. We showed it up on the video and all that stuff. Anyway, well, he was going to pay. And all he did was turn around. And I didn't hear anything about the money. And all of a sudden, I called the judge one day and he said, "Oh, Judy, he took bankruptcy. You can take bankruptcy and all this stuff. Well, can you take bankruptcy on this? Because we didn't get a dime."
I'm sure that you did.
I owe you one hundred dollars. Now, you know, nothing. And the judge says, "Oh, you're going to get this. You'll get this."
Well, if you're going to take bankruptcy, you're going to have to have money to pay your lawyer to file bankruptcy charges.
But I don't know how he got it. But all I know is, he's out there roaming around with our money. You know, you know what I'm saying? And, and, and even the judge says, "Oh, Judy, you'll get that money. Don't worry about it. You'll get it." Well, there's no way to add it. He's taken bankruptcy. That's it. I don't know what, how, did it or not. Okay, my second question though is, are we going to need to have a hire, a new person just to keep up with all this? Because who's going to keep up with all this?
If it gets to going in a positive manner, like I think it will, if it gets to going in a positive manner, like I think it will, we will have enough funding in this to, to pay for itself. We can have someone in Bristol and Kingsport both.
Well, as much as everybody wants to get paid, we need to get them. We'll take all that money just to pay ourselves. Okay, anyway. I spoke my piece. I said, "Maybe you should go home for the next two months and let my U.P. take it."
No, I, I, I'm, I'm glad you asked that question, Judy, because this is the follow-up on that. You didn't get your money. You, you were out of.
I didn't get money. I see him walking around. I didn't know what he was for.
Yep. Yep. So, what should have been done, they should have been liens, they should have been everything that they could have been done.
They don't have the manpower of the sheriff's office. They said, "We can't go out there and grab everybody."
Well, we sent, we sent thirteen, we sent ten deputies over a couple of months ago to do these ankle monitors, and we got forty people out. We already have some people that can do this work program.
All I know is, he's on where he's.
Okay. We've, we've, we've got other folks. Let's, let's, let's move on. Commissioner George. Commissioner George, thank you, Judy. Commissioner George.
I mean, I know we have some state prisoners that we house at our jail. Is this something that we would be able to charge them since the state has already sold?
No. The state's already reimbursing this. Michael can maybe tell you how many state prisoners it's over.
So, those would not be eligible for any of, to be charged?
Because the state already pays us for those.
So, in your numbers, those are just to the side. The second thing, if you're looking at where someone's in jail for child support and we're allowing them to do the work, would we be taking the thirty-five dollars a day first before they caught up on their childcare to cover this expense or is this something?
I think we could do both because.
I mean, they're, they owe, excuse me a minute. Somebody owes ten thousand dollars in childcare. I mean, I, I hate to take money from a child. So, I mean, I understand.
And that's the point of this too. If we've got folks in that jail that's not paying child support, they need to work. They need to pay for the child that they brought into this world. They need to help make it a success.
Look at what you're talking about. I mean, I know, my understanding is when we looked at work release and when I've done some research on that, to take four prisoners, it takes a jailer to do. So, you have to cover the complete salary, those plus salary transportation of that jailer to be with those four workers. And when you're looking at thirty-five dollars a day, you mean four workers, that's not going to cover the one person to go there. I mean, I, I love, I mean, I know we have asked and asked for the people to come out and do pick up trash. And, and the response we've gotten is they don't have the personnel to supervise the inmates. So, that will be additional people hired. But my question, when you're talking about community service, so if, if we use these people to come out and pick up trash, then the county is going to actually have to pay minimum wage for this job so that they get money to pay back the county?
The minimum wage would be a credit to the county.
But then that's money that you're looking at is not actually going to be money.
But at least they're doing something in the county.
I mean, I'm a hundred percent for people working. And I said, my understanding is when we ask is they don't have the personnel to supervise. And the question too, and I, and I, I think it's wonderful you put some money in here for raises. My concern on that is, how can you, how, if you, if you put money that you haven't received in for raises or that we don't get, how is that sustainable? Because let's assume that you've done your math and you're saying we're going to get a million dollars in, and let's say we get a hundred thousand, but we've given all these people raises, then that's going to cost the taxpayers a lot more if we hire people to supervise. Are you going to, how are the raises going to be done?
I think it should be a step, it should be a step raise.
Like a bonus though? I mean, like if we get money in, if we collect, we can give you a bonus from what we collect. But if you set it up forever and we don't collect, that's going to cost our taxpayers a whole lot more money.
We're going to have to do something to keep those jailers in the jail. What's happening is, and I'm sure that Michael and if Tony was here, probably tell you the same thing, the turnover rate for the, for the.
Turnover rate right now for every single position, you can't, there are no people to hire. Everybody is, is paying ungodly amounts to try to get.
And I don't think there's a one of us sitting in these chairs right now that would work in that jail for what is being offered to start out. You just can't do it.
Well, there's, it's not just jails. It's police officers too. So, that's true. It's everybody.
Also, also those folks, those folks are moving up into system and eventually getting out on the road. And then you have to start all over again with a brand new person, bring them into the jail, train them, get them with inmates.
Yeah. I'm not saying they don't deserve more money. My concern is that this money, like you said, try it a year. Well, if we give everybody raises and we're not bringing in the money, we are still, as this body here, we have committed to those salaries.
We need to see where that funding is after the year. It will be done, it will be done when we do the budget. We'll see the money that we've got.
It is not something.
Exactly. It's not something that's going to be done on the front end.
If it's all community service, which is a wash, there's no real money changing hands. There's no real money. The, the benefit is what we get now. If, if we send inmates out to pick up trash, as we should be doing now.
We're not paying them money.
We're not giving them money and the, and the community that's paying to keep them there is getting trash picked out. We're not able to do that because we don't have enough jailers now, is my understanding. And if we look at work release where you're four people here, five people here, two people here, I don't, I don't know if there's any employer that can take a hundred right now.
My question is, and if yours is not here, but I would ask them, we gave you ten deputies when we done ankle monitors. If you've got thirty people out.
Why are we not doing, I mean, we've already worked in that direction. Why are we not utilizing the programs we've already put in place and paid for? That would be, to me, the first thing is, we've already done something and it's not, we're not utilizing it. So, I'd like to see that happen. But I said, I get, I want to do something.
I would ask the judicial system then.
Stay on the bill.
I'm for something, but I just don't understand why we've done things that haven't. And that's it. I'm good.
Thank you. Michael, before, Dan had kind of chimed in here and wanted to, Dan, I had you up
You don't want to be rude. I don't know where to start, but what I did want to say.
Let's keep it.
What I, what I did.
No, no, we're going to, we're going to answer these questions.
I, I've already got a page full of stuff. But what I did want to say is, people in jail don't go to jail to make money and pay child support. I, I don't know where you came up with that ideal. That has not happened. People that can't pay child support are put in jail for contempt of court because they didn't pay, but they don't go in there and make money. I, I, that crazy idea.
What I'm saying is, Dan, if they are in there for not paying child support, then they can work while they're in there and we can deduct that child support from their pay.
First of all, it would be, as Johnny Major said, what a Merry Christmas it'd be if ifs and buts were candy and nuts. I mean, where are all these jobs you're talking about? I mean, you've, you've described that we have seven. Why aren't these inmates doing these jobs now? I feel sure the sheriff would be mighty happy if the, if these inmates could be let out to go to work. So, you, you know, I don't think these jobs you're talking about are out there. If they are, why aren't they, why aren't we using them now?
That's my question.
Dan, I, I recognize you for, for some legal advice. And I'm, and I still want to recognize you. If you can give them legal advice, those are considering this, what's legal and what's not. That's why I recognize you, not to argue about whether it's good or bad. Please do it.
Well, I think it is partially legal issues. I mean, he's saying these inmates can go out and work. And I question that. I, I will say a couple of things. Of course, we're working on the jail and its population. Public defender said the other day, ninety-eight percent of the people in the Southern County jail use the public defender. Now, what does that mean? They are indigent. They don't have any money. Point number two, there's two resolutions already on the books that are doing exactly what this resolution does. One was on the books before I came here, and then one was passed under Sheriff Carr. And both of them fell by the wayside. One of them, I think it was the second one, was as a result of a state statute that was passed that said that the state treasury would assist all counties in collecting it, and they would set up an apartment to help collect that money. A year later, it was abandoned because they couldn't collect any money. Point number three, I mean, the time and effort to chase these people down and try to collect money for them would be a lot of time and effort. And none of them have any money. So, I mean, you know, I guess, oh, you can't, one of the biggest things that I sort of hear you say several times is that you could use this debt somehow to increase their stay at the jail. You can't do that. You can't base confinement on the ability to pay. That's very, very clearly unconstitutional. If a person has the ability to pay, for example, let's say he has an obligation to pay restitution to, to somebody that he's harmed. If he has that ability to pay and that's made clear, then that can be a condition of his probation and he can, he can be expected to comply with his probation. But if they put down an order that, that he owes restitution and he's not able to pay it, we don't have debtors present in America. You can't go to jail just because you can't pay something. The question was asked, when it's time to be released, can they be held until they pay? No, they cannot be held until they pay. Unless you could find them in contempt of court that they had the ability and money to pay. But, I mean, it, it all gets so complicated. I'll stop there because as, as the mayor said, there's a, there's a fine line between legality and opinions. But I, I do think they're all sort of related.
Okay, Commissioner Calhoun, I believe you're up.
Thanks. Thank, thank you, Chairman. Thanks, Dan. That's what I was going to touch on was the indigent cost that you would pay to the state. We have a litter pickup. I'm going to try to do this real quick and get it back to full circle. I'm going to get off on a rabbit hole, but I'll bring it back. Okay? Sure. So, we do have a litter pickup, but that's a grant through the state. So, we do have, we have two people. But that, that's all we have because, like I said, that's through the state. If we didn't have that grant through the state, then we wouldn't have people to go out to work. Right now, we cannot arrest people or people cannot be violated on to pay fines and fees because, Dan, isn't that more of a punitive? If you hold people for not paying, it's more of a punitive punishment and overstay of their sentence. Besides the Robinette Company, do we have any other companies that would be on board?
And my question about that is, Michael, who's, who's getting that money from the Robinette Company now for these four prisoners? Is that being paid to the sheriff's department? Is that being paid to the county? If it's already a program that's working like that, why would this be so hard?
I don't know. I'm not, I'm not on that one. But they do pay for the work release program as well. And that comes to Southern County. And we have five people on the work release program because we can't get people to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vance, and then Commissioner Horvath.
Well, my last point is going to be, I, I understand what Urs was saying in all the discussions. But I think it's obvious that the sheriff has already went on record that he was opposed to this. And I think passing this resolution without the sheriff and the judicial system's support, I think it's just frivolous. That, that will be the reason I vote against it. The sheriff wants to come over here and he feels that they can do that, collect the money. And it's got, it's done its due diligence and it's got a pathway of how to implement this program. We understand the cost of implementing the program with questionable percentage of return in that program than I would, I would vote for. But I, I can't vote for trying to micromanage the sheriff's department, the judicial system by imposing a fine or fees on, on, on the inmates to jail. I agree. It's a, it's a big debt expense. It's more of a social issue in our country. And it's something we as, as elected officials get challenged with, as this whole country's being challenged with a lot of different things. And I just, I just don't think this, I don't think this is a win unless the judicial system and the sheriff is willing to get on board with it. But I will be voting that.
Well, the sheriff needs to give us, he needs to give us an example of a program that would work for him. Because what we've been doing is been throwing piles of money over and nothing's getting done in return. So, if he's got a program that he thinks will work, he needs to bring it to this commission and present it to us. I'd be willing to put this resolution right here in my desk drawer if that's the case. Bring something in here that's going to work.
Commissioner Horvath, you're, you're recognized.
Just a quick question. Should, in the event that a resolution is passed, is this is this retroactive to those incarcerated now or is this going forward and at the time, from the time the resolution passes? So what would be the structure of the imposition of the, of the costs? Would that be immediate for everybody?
It would be on the grounds of future prisoners when they go to court. That would have to be when it takes place, when the judge sentences them to their time and the amount of fees and, and restitution that they would have to pay, yes, it would have to start at that point in time. So if it was, if we passed it, if it was, I could put in here a date where it would go in effect, say November first, or I could do an amendment where it would start January of 2023, we could do that. I'd be willing to do that.
Okay, Dan answered your question, Dr. Hobbs.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Crawford.
Thanks, Mayor. The only thing I could say about this, I, I think it probably has merit somewhere. Right now, it just seems like there's so much out here. If we could just gather it in and have a better consensus of what the judicial system is feeling and what the mayor, what the sheriff is feeling and sit down with, with them and, and find out what they're saying, why it won't work. We don't even know why it won't work. And there's a lot of questions still, if it will work. So I think there's just too much scattered out to get a good consensus of whether this is meritable for our county. I know it works in some other counties, but implementation would be critical to doing something like this. And if you don't have the judicial system on board and the sheriff, it, it's futile. I don't think you could ever get it off the ground.
If I may go back to read, "Resolution to Request Officials of the Southern County Judicial System Representing Southern County Courts to Review Provisions of a Southern County Pay-to-Stay Program and Discuss Odd Deal Was Designed to Require an Inmate to Repay Per Dam of Cost of Thirty-Five Dollars and/or Other Cost for Their Stay When Committed to the Southern County Jail for Any Other Time." That's basically what, what you said, Larry, and I would be willing to do that. I was kind of hoping that we'd have some judges here tonight, I was kind of hoping we'd have the sheriff here tonight. But I think it's very plain to me that, that some don't want it to work. And it's going to benefit that department more than it is any department in Southern County.
That should see the dozens, that's a signal too.
But I apologize, I, I was told that the sheriff could be on vacation. I apologize for that. Maybe he'll be here. If, if, if you guys want to do that, I would be willing to, to move this to the next county.
Well, this is, this is work session and we want to invite the sheriff, go ahead and send it. Board's empty. Commissioner Glover needs a break.
No, I'm not going to break, I'm giving him a break. I'm here, I'm here for the jury. I'm ready, I'm ready to go.
I've cut you off, Ursula.
Thank you.
Okay. I, I'm sorry, I, I was, I thought you were through, I'm sorry. Okay. I hope you all will remember these things next Thursday night. And I think Commissioner Glover has indicated it will just work. And if we need to invite some people over here, we'll just do that. Okay, very good. Next up, item number three. Commissioner Vance, you're recognized on item number three.
Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution I'd like to ask to have put on the Senate agenda. This is a resolution we passed in May in regard to our grant application, community development block grant. We've got notified that, that the grant's now moved up to forty-five thousand dollars, not to exceed. So we're just rescinding the previous resolution and introducing this resolution to, to meet the requirements of the new grant application.
Mark, you will leave your questions way through.
Yes.
Any questions?
If you have a question, I'd be fine too.
Okay, I'm sorry, you didn't see, you're, you're recognized.
Mark, can you tell me what a, what the, what's a childcare CV, community block grant? Is it something for, like the childcare for the county or what is it?
I, I, to be honest with you, I just know we've done this for years and it's, it's something about providing for indigent care for, for childcare. And I don't, maybe Mayor Benble can explain more where it goes through, first in the development district.
I think that, I think this money is available to fund the development district programs and it's, each county's got to apply for the wrong and then it goes to childcare, first in the development district. That's my understanding.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Mr. Jones, Mr. Jones, Mr. Jones. Angie, would you like to come up for her? You're recognized.
This resolution is for the highway department to enter in agreement with Boondam. They are paving the roadway out there that we had to close off on Mingo Road and going up to the dam. And this is, it's given Scott permission to enter in agreement. They will be paying for Boondam Road project to resurface. Boondam Road and Highway Seventy-Five to up to Mingo Road at the TBA entrance. And then the Senate View project, which is resurfacing the parking area at the Everlook.
You heard that question, any questions for Commissioner Stanley? Okay, we will ask the waiver rule on that next Thursday night.
Yes.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Gary Stidham, and he asked that this just be on first reading next week. And while we're there, I, I would like to comment because at Budget Committee last week, I, I made an offhand comment that I felt like the commission needed some assistance and that there's some necessary changes coming up in my office, obviously. And that's about it. This covers a lot of things. Says Public Affairs Director, that's not the reason for the resolution. So the reason for the resolution is to create a position of assistant to the commission to do what the commission needs done. And the commission needs done are resolutions and things of that nature and research. So next week, I hope you'll have a full discussion of this. We've been, had the, a great opportunity to have somebody working for the mayor that had multiple talents and everybody doesn't have those talents. And Mr. Street has helped with resolutions over the years. But depending on who, I fill the slot that Angela will be leaving if we'll have that talent to do that and experience to do that. Obviously, I'd look for that and hire somebody. But the reason for this is just to have somebody to assist the commission in preparation of resolutions, preparation of, and the research that you might need on those resolutions. And there are other jobs that they could do and there may be a bunch of jobs that they could do. But it's not a public relations, what I want to make, it's not a public, just a pure public relations position. It is a pure assistant to the commission position. So we'll have full discussion on that one, sponsors here next week. Mr. Morrell, you're recognized on item number six.
Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution that we do every year with the education department at the end of the year as we do various offices and their budgets at the end of the year. This is simply moving money around from one account to another and this is no new money. This is just moving existing funds from one account to the other. If you look at the chart, the four hundred account supplies, four hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars, that's being moved into the first five accounts there that totals out four hundred eighty-seven thousand. And then in debt service down at the bottom, it goes from one account to the other there. And I asked for a waiver rules on this. This is, this has to be completed by the thirtieth of this month. If I, ma'am? Yeah, I'm asking for it to be put on the Senate agenda, please.
For explanation, Commissioner Crawford, you're recognized.
Yes, if Randy didn't mind, I was going to digress about one from just a minute ago. Because when Ms. Stanley asked a question, I started thinking about it and she was right, I didn't understand it either. So I, I looked it up and it's kind of interesting. That CV is Latin, is curriculum vitae, and it stands for course of life. So what that CV means is when people fill out for that grant, they have, the people applying for it have to provide a detailed documentation containing relevant information about their academic and professional history. So that's what that's all about, is giving them a tracking error, which went along with the education. So that was my tie-in.
We're, we're all learning.
I didn't know either, so I looked it up. Anyway, that's all I have.
Okay, that's good. Randy, any questions, Randy? Seeing none. Uh, Ursula? Randy, I'm going to ask a particular resolution. What kind of fine, what's the total fine balance that the school department's got in here right now? Do you know?
No, I don't, but I imagine Mr. Rafalaski might be able to show us.
She here that can tell that what they've got in their fine balance right now? Director Rafalaski, you're recognized in well.
Good afternoon, and I apologize that I don't have all the notes with me from the other night, but I believe we're at about seven point two million.
Seven point two million, that's what's in your fine balance right now?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, this will be the waiver rule request on Thursday night. That completes our resolution agenda. And then, congratulations. We're, we're German. Commissioner Glover, you're recognized.
Can I, can I read something to you that was left in my mailbox? And can I read something to you that was in our, that was left in our mailbox? And I think, yeah, yeah, motherfuckers got two issues. This is something I'd like to read tonight and send next Thursday night to give some folks some things to, to think about and a copy of this is in your, is in your mailbox from what? Said, "We, the Southern County Department of Education Support Staff, write this letter out of strong disappointment of the actions and decisions taken by the Southern County Board of Education and Director of Schools relating to the Board's approval to give support staff a one percent pay increase. This disappointment was compounded by the fact that the Board of Education felt compelled to give coaches voluntary roles a pay increase without first taking care of the full-time support staff employees. Desperate for our voices to be heard, we asked the Southern County Commission to formally review and address the actions taken by the Southern County Board of Education and the Director. The past decade, as support staff members, we have been told numerous times, we will take care of you next year. As support staff members, we had high hopes for the year 2022 as we were told numerous times by supervisors and the Director of Schools was quoted in a news article, we're going to take care of you this year. Unfortunately, we have not yet been failed once again by the Board of Education and the Director. Teachers received a ten to fifteen percent pay increase last school year and the support staff did not even receive the five percent county raise. We as support staff members were saddened by the lack of our support roles received. Our members told essential trade skills, excuse me, our members hold essential trade skills in varying formal education degrees in their field deserving the attention of the Board of Education and the schools and the Director of Schools. Every support staff member is critical in maintaining the school's infrastructure and ensures safe facilities for our students. Neighboring school districts pay skills for similar positions are also comparable based on responsibilities and job requirements currently being asked of our support staff. Please help us have a voice in these decisions that affect us and our families on a daily basis. Respectfully submitted, Southern County School Support Staff."
Well, we won't need a copy of the clerk because we are German and that was in your mailbox, so. Have a safe trip home, folks. Thank you for coming.